Let's go look at the agenda. Anybody have any questions on the agenda? Consent agenda.
One thing on the consent agenda, we've, there's a bid on there for septic system services. And we were notified that perhaps the people that we are recommending don't have, I guess it would be considered an official license to do that kind of work, although they've done a lot of work apparently throughout the mid-state. But that said, we hope to by tomorrow have a formal notification whether in fact they do our license or there may be a change there. But again, we've been working on it today after that notification and we just don't know for sure, but should by tomorrow.
Doris.
How many schools do we have on a septic system?
Oh, I'm not sure.
I don't think, really, I think it's that's part of it. I think it's renewal for pumping grease traps is what it is actually.
Okay.
We don't have any on the septic system.
They're all on step systems?
Yeah, they're on, there's some on steps and we have a little water
Which schools have those? Eagle Bull and?
Eagle Bull, Kittrelle, Last Casses and Buckannon. And we're in the process of investigating Buckannon and then all of Rock Vale has and hooking Rock Vale to city to a bus to, so it's kind of costly to rock in another way.
I thought they were gonna hook Rock Vale up when we built the school out there, but the line wasn't the right spot, was it?
They were waiting on the, on one, the guy was supposed to be there.
Right, that's, that's what it was.
Still sitting in the same place, isn't it? Stopped at the same place?
Yes.
Any other questions on the consent agenda?
Smooth. We have three zone appeals tomorrow. Also, we'll do a two or three minute report on value added. Mr. Oldham, you want to share some information? Application for extended learning programs for 2010, 2011. The extended contract allocation for 2010, 2011 school year has been received. State will fund extended contracts for 2010, 2011 using American Reinvestment and Recovery Act air funds. Rutherford County's allocation is 225,000 is identical to the '09, 2010 allocation. Then, Contract Committee is seeking approval to submit the application using the same program parameters that Rutherford County has been using for the past several years. Those parameters and priority are summer school, school year remediation intervention programs, school year enrichment programs, skills training for enhanced potential with Nissan. And we'll obviously recommend that you approve the-
Question.
Ten, School Nutrition, Mr. Blair, who's the School Nutrition Coordinator, recommended the following changes to satellite cafeteria operations. No current satellite managers will be affected by these changes, so it's a good time to adjust the program. Recommendations and reason behind them are as follows. Rock Spring's middle satellite, Smyrna West. Number Francis originally served this site but is requested to be removed from the duties. Dr. Estery's in agreement with the change. Blackman High will satellite Holloway and Daniel McKee Alternative School. Central Middle originally served this site but due to personnel changes, income manager has no school nutrition experience. Oakland High School was also considered but declined the additional responsibilities. Ms. Vick is in agreement with the change. And McFadden, the satellite for Homer Peter Campus School. Central Middle originally served this site but has changed him to Central Magnet High School. Cannot meet many requirements for elementary schools. Dr. Blair's in agreement with the change. It's also recommended that the pay scale for the satellite manager be changed. If you serve one school, they'll be compensated at a 4.5 level and a manager with two or more additional schools will be at a level of 5.0. That's about a thousand dollars per level increase. High schools with a ninth grade add ex will be considered as one school and would no longer be eligible for additional pay.
Questions?
Homer Peter Campus School Contract Amendment. Bill Tennessee State University has offered to amend the contract we have for Homer Peter Campus School in order to provide a 10-month secretary clerk. In its sole discretion, on an annual basis, the university may either provide the services of a 10-month secretary clerk to work at campus school as mutually determined or fund salary only and no benefits. One such county physician in an amount not to exceed the midpoint of the university's technical clerk position or the county's average salary for comparable county secretary clerk position, whichever's less. So in respect, what we're doing there is they're paying a salary, we're covering the benefits, right Jeff? Except, if may be provided otherwise in this agreement, the county shall be responsible for providing and funding all of the campus school staffing needs. And Ms. Barnes and Ms. Sambig and I, all three of them have kind of been in the, in the loop on this. What that person will do is basically coordinate with the university incoming students as part of the training program. And will do much work for the university and quite a bit for the school system too. So it's a, it's really a pretty good deal for us financially. So we'll recommend that we do that.
So this is a new position at the school or it's not the regular secretarial?
Well, actually, I think we started it late last year. And they, they compensated, but we thought we'd get it in more of a form, formal, do it more of a formal way and break for the board and all that. But they actually did that sometime after starting last year, they started doing something, didn't they?
Shifted a person.
Yeah, shifted a person, yeah. Shifted salaries, that's right.
But it's, it's a new position at the school, is that, that's what I'm finding?
You agree it's a new position that, I mean, it's? Now, go, go back to Dr. Burns's question. We had a bookkeeper, I mean, are we adding one person over what we had last year?
Essentially, MTSU added the person last year to take care of the duties. It was an MTSU person. But now they are wanting it to become our person and they are offering to pay some amount for the base pay.
But is it a replacement for the school secretary who's been there or not?
No, 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 no. We'll still have the school secretary there. So from that perspective, it's a replacement. But I, I don't know that they've always had that number of employees there.
Okay, all right, that clears, thank you, that clears it. Any other questions? Okay, financial matters.
Playground equipment and rubber surfacing for 21 schools. Special Education Department requests board approval to purchase $3,140,944 playground equipment and rubber surfacing from Kraus Craft Incorporated and kids' own play systems for 21 schools. System will use its federal stimulus funds for this purchase. This equipment and rubber surfacing meets the requirements of the era section 1605 and era section 1606. The rubber surfacing will provide accessibility for all students and will be at a lower maintenance cost. Rubber surfacing will also include interactive games. The new equipment will incorporate special education inclusion for the students. Total cost of the equipment and the rubber surfacing is $3,140,944. This cost includes all equipment installation. Special Education Department will pay 100% of this purchase utilizing its carryover era stimulus funds. Board approves, purchase will be contingent on formal state approval. This price is utilized in TPCN contract, R4967 Kraus Craft Incorporated Corporation. And Weeford County Board of Education contract with the kids' own play system. And we're recommending that we approve that.
Questions?
That's awful lot of money, is, is this the, the only option we have? What other options do we have? I know that they, they limit what you can do with these funds, but is anything other was considered?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we did, first of all, you're limited in the scope of how you could use the money pretty significantly. And looked at every, every potential use. Jeff was in on it, Mr. Oldham, myself, Jeff, you want to comment on it?
With the special ed era money, we, we're very limited. We don't want to go into recurring expenditures because when the money's gone, we'd have to come up with it from local funding. So Ms. Bell and her staff have been looking for items that are not. And last year, a, a good bit of equipment was bought for special ed rooms. And we have discussed this issue before, this, we couldn't afford this kind of surface. And the special playground at Rock Spring, Rock Vale Elementary has this surface. It's better accessible for wheelchairs, items like that, so.
Well, I think you make a good point about the recurring costs too. And I, you know, that money dries up after next year, right?
Yes, sir.
Was there any kind of maintenance effort issue on any of this?
Not, now, we still have our local expend, our, our GP budget, special ed maintenance of issue will be, issues that we'll be watching, but this won't impact that at all.
Sorry, Doris.
I only remember working at Rock Vale Elementary just a few years ago, couple of years ago, I think we resurfaced and, and did some things at the playground. I do not recall any of the other elementary schools in, in our tenure receiving this kind of upgrade. Maybe there have been some, but I just don't remember.
We've got a stock plan for re-mulching and, you know, a lot of times PTOs head up various efforts to add additional equipment, but obviously not this expenditure. But the one you're talking about was there was something to do with a deaf, Ms. Bell or one of the deaf child.
Right. And the money was raised.
Yeah, and there was an anonymous donor of fifty thousand.
The one example I can think of where special attention was given to upgrading the playground area for special needs children. So we've not done this in the past and this would be a great opportunity, I think, to to do some upgrading in all of, many of our schools.
And we, we have looked at this surface in the past and couldn't afford it. This is an opportunity.
And, you know, which, going back to Grant's question, you know, we, we were a little hamstrung with respect to how we could spend all that money and we literally were having a difficult time getting it all spent. We seldom have that luxury, but that's pretty neat.
What are the schools? I didn't-
Twenty-one, I guess all the elementary, right, sure? Yeah. You want to, you want to know them, Dr. Burns, or just?
Well, if it's all elementary, that's-
I think that's what it is.
I assume that's what it is.
K-5.
B, sensors.
Mine's not on there, here you go.
Maybe I want to move that.
No, you're supposed to be on there, mine just, I guess I need to refresh mine. Let me see that. Energy sensors at Tuna Middle Schools, Oakland and Whitworth, need to be added to our energy sensor project. These schools were not including the original project because they were in the earlier stages of construction when the project was designed. Total cost for 498 sensors, $2.49 per school, will be $149,400. Forty-seven thousand, three hundred and ten in EESI grant funds are available for part of the project. The remaining 102,090 can be funded either through change orders in the building fund or the general purpose school budget. That'd be the funding source and we're going to recommend that you do that. I'm sure some of you thought it was being done anyway. But I don't, obviously, they've mobilized, they're here, and we need to do that.
Mr. Blair?
I apologize, EESI, I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Energy efficient schools and issues. Yeah, schools and issues.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Facilities.
Homer Peter School bid, 10 days, three window replacement. It's all part of the original agreement between us and MTSU, right, Mr. Clardy? And reflected our, I think, three separate bids on June 4th, 2010. Bids were received for the replacement windows at Homer Peter Campus School. There were three bids received from the following contractors. Southeast Contractor, $315,946. The Richardson Group, $368,447.67. Dale Incorporated, $598,500. Two addendums were sent out prior to the bids being received. Staff contacted the two lowest bidders and requested bid breakdowns and samples of the proposed windows to be used that met the project specifications. Below are the breakdowns and information on proposed window supplier. And I don't know that I need to go over everyone on them, but it's reflected on there if any, any of the viewers want to see that. Is that okay with everybody? And we're going to recommend that the Richardson Group, the lowest and best bid for window installation at Homer Peter Campus School in the amount of $249,447. Lead abatement will be performed through Rutherford County Board of Education's existing environmental bid. So that's why we have, their bid reflects $301,447.67. And if you take the $52,000 for lead abatement away, that's how we get the $249,447.
Questions?
Do these replacement windows maintain the character of the present windows, the mullions and?
Yes, they do. And they're all wood. They're on the inside, they'll be pre-painted when they arrive. And the mullion, they're not true divided light, but they have a five mullion on them at the factory that makes them appear to be true divided light.
They just maintain the historical character of the building?
Any other questions? Okay, Kittrelle and Last Casses.
Engineering contract for Kittrelle and Last Casses wastewater treatment facilities repair and design. Site engineering consultants, consultants have submitted a proposal for repair design of the existing wastewater facilities at Last Casses Elementary School and Kittrelle Elementary School satisfy the state of Tennessee's immediate requirements. Listing of future tasks that are required is also included along with pricing. The total engineering fee for each project is $32,125, with the majority of that money to be spent in future fiscal years. Funds of $109,000 for each project are approved in the 2010, 2011 capital improvements list. These funds will cover the immediate repairs and engineers fee. You want to explain exactly what we're doing, Mr. Clardy?
The state has issued some requirements for us on the existing plants at Kittrelle and Last Casses. They're both in very bad shape from corrosion and different issues. Plus, they're wanting, requiring a new way to measure the effluent or the flow out of the plant. This proposal helps us get over that hurdle with the money that we have by repairing those plants. And also included in this fee is the design for each one of those schools for future. For instance, out at Last Casses, there's a drip system over on the other side of the road in the subdivision. So they're proposing that we design a system to pump that effluent from the school wastewater over into that and be treated. Then at Kittrelle, it would either have to replace that existing treatment plant or put in a drip system out there. So we're considering designing a drip system for the Kittrelle area that would be large enough for future schools to be built and added to that system out there. So this money's in the engineering fee include all of that work, but we'll just be getting those up right now to get the state off our back a little, little while.
What would be the normal life expectancy of a step system?
Um, if, I don't know, I would say, you know, 20 years. The state has recently expanded the flow that they will allow in certain areas, per area. And they also make you set aside property in reserve when you build a step system. So if you do have a problem with some kind of infiltration or the water, the property quits perking, then you could expand that. So I'd say at least 20 years.
But both of those schools would be approaching that? Either approaching it or exceeding, gone beyond the 20 years.
Well, these, the systems that are there are small state-approved wastewater plants that we treat the water and release, take the solids off and release the runoff or the effluent back into streams on both of these. So they're not actually drip systems, they're treatment plant.
At Brown's Chapel, we were able to match up with the developer. Is there any, that seems like a real win situation for us. What would be the chances of some kind of development such as that with developers that might be looking at the Kittrelle and Last Casses area?
Well, there's, there's a possibility that that could, that could work and that would, but we're viewing that as being quite a ways in the future because of the slow development in that area. And then we would, in one way, be partnering up with the developer by getting into the other system over across the street and that subdivision.
We start thinking about it now and taking some initial steps, it might help us somewhere out there in the future tie into a stronger system.
Yes, sir. We'll, you know, we'll be considering all aspects of that as we move through the design of this.
Any other questions? Transportation.
Fourteen, transportation. Pursuant to policy 1 dash 41, bus contractor work procedures. New contractor list for 2010, 2011 school year are presented for approval in order to facilitate the awarding of new bus contractors, contracts on a timely basis for the beginning of the new school year and thereafter as contracts are turned in into the transportation department throughout the year. These four lists are first priority, regular bus drivers; second priority, part-time or sub-drivers; third priority, those who have turned down the opportunity; and fourth list, those who currently own one or more contracts. And we'll recommend that you approve that.
Questions? Revised policies.
How you want me to handle that?
We all know, but we've all, we've had them on one reading already. Do you want to go through them again or do you just want to, okay? We're just, everybody knows what they are, Mr. Gill. We'll just vote them all at one, like, tomorrow, if that's, unless somebody's got one they want to pull out.
Sixteen, negotiation team for 2010, 2011. Tennessee Code Antelope 49 dash 5 dash 60881 requires the Board of Education designate and certify negotiations management team within the first two months of the fiscal year. Recommend that you approve the following individuals as a management team for 2010, 2011. Ms. Barnes, Ms. Bell, Ms. Jackie Elo, Ms. Joe Marlin, and Ms. Kim Day.
Did you point these people? You make, you make friends when you do this, don't you? When you point these people. Any questions? Bless your hearts.
Insurance has obviously been a sticky wicket for all of us, so to speak, and generated a lot of discussion over the last couple of years. Ms. Barnes is, is going to brave any criticism she might get and come up here and give us a kind of a summary on what's up now.
I will do that, thank you. You asked for an insurance update from our insurance committee meetings. So many of you probably already know that the insurance committee recommended to the county, county commission that we conduct a eligibility dependent verification process this summer to protect the viability and long-term quality of the program. And to my recollection, this is the first time we've done a dependent verification in many, many years. And I don't recall the percentage of savings, but I know there was one and a number of people that they anticipated to clean up the whole program. So in June, we sent out a voluntary removal form that gave people that opportunity to take dependents off that they knew shouldn't be there. And then in July, we received the official request for documentation for existing dependents that should be on your program. And there's a whole packet of information that gives you dependent descriptions, what documentation is required for you to send in to support that dependent, and instructions on how to submit. Yes, sir?
Why are they asking for income tax information, salary? That's none of their business.
I, I think if you call that number, there's an opportunity to delete the salary information from that sheet, but that, that, that income tax information lists both spouse and husband and wife on the same form. And that's one way of identifying that you are still together.
Question number two. Why do you have to verify, if this new law has already gone into effect, that your children are on the policy till they're 26, why does that have to be verified?
It starts in January. So right now, we're still going-
So we're going to kick them off between now and January? See, that doesn't make sense to me, but it's okay.
Well, and again, I think they're just trying to identify. This came about in discussion probably early in the year before the new law went into effect.
I thought it came in, in effect in September, but I guess maybe I'm wrong.
But, but it doesn't, it's not effective until January 1, 2011. So, and I think that, we've had that same discussion, but this is something the insurance committee, again, Lois Miller spearheaded this one, she will steer heel with this.
Sure she did.
You know, one of the things that we asked and baby Jeff could ask, because it's, it's going to come up with so many, like, blended families. Like, we're, obviously, we all know what a blended family is, but if you've got a stepson or a stepdaughter that lives with one parent and the other parent is the person insured, can, you know, do they have to submit an income tax form? Or do they, can they arrange coverage even though they're not the custodial parent on that child?
So there are so many different variables when you talk about dependent eligibility and, and so many different situations. And I think the information in that packet tries to describe the dependent, who they live with, who has custody, and it tries to give you some guidelines as to what then you need to submit. If that's answering your question. And again, I think part of the study, because there are different multi-levels within families, you're still not going to be able to cover everybody. So you've got to identify who you are going to cover.
We went through this at the university about, about a year ago, I think. And it wasn't nearly as bad as we thought it was going to be. The phone number, they actually answered, it was a human, spoke English.
Right.
And were very helpful and knowledgeable. And I think it might have been the same company, so if that helps allay any. I, I don't remember it being asked about income tax stuff, but in general, the process was fairly painful.
One of the forms of documentation they could require.
I just think a lot of people will, will balk at trying to get their server information.
A lot of people complained about it, yeah.
Would you be willing to do mine for me then, since you've had experience?
I do know if you couldn't supply the income tax, you could do a marriage license and you could do a utility bill with both names on it. So they give you several different options that you can use. The second thing that we covered in our insurance committee, just so you'll know, the insurance committee did approve to accept the insurance rates that were negotiated by the Board of Ed for all counties. So we'll all continue to be using the same rates, even though we're 10 months in their 12 months deduction, the cost is the same to all employees. So that was approved as well. And it's, we contribute 77% for both county and general for option one and there were no changes to option two. And then lastly, part of your scanned in information was a Gatsby criteria for post-employment benefits. And it's posted on the website at the county general insurance office so that you can see what the criteria is for post-employment benefits and how you would need eligibility. Yes, sir?
Could we get a copy of that packet in case we get questioned?
Yes, sir. It, it's a flow chart.
Well, I'd see, is there something other than the flow chart? I, I saw that, did you say there was a more definitive?
A nine-page, there's a nine-tiered packet, I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Speaker Ball.
Thank you.
Eighteen, Executive Committee Approval. I just lost my spot. Rutherford County School Board Executive Committee approved on July 14, 2010, the emergency purchase of one compressor from Wilson Elementary School. The bid was awarded to McQuaid International with a bid of $23,499 to be funded from the maintenance department budget. Kind of an FYI.
Mr. Blair?
Did it just wear out or did lightning hit it or something?
I think it just wore out, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nineteen.
Next is select a high, site for next high school. I wanted, before we do that, I want to say that we, Ms. Clardy and myself and actually, Ms. Sambig and Mr. Oldham wrote out to the new middle schools- I wanted, before we do that, I want to say that, uh, we, Ms. Clardy and myself and actually, uh, Mr. Sam Big and, uh, Mr. Odom wrote out to the new middle schools. Those things are really something to be proud of. I, I noticed yesterday when we were leaving, McCann and three kids came up there with their parent, and they were just heartbroken, they couldn't get inside to take, to look at it, I mean, they were so excited. Uh, and they were leaving, uh, I think McCann Elementary. And, uh, they're, they're excited to behold, and we built them very cheap and got a lot for, for the taxpayers' dollar. Uh, I know the board will be proud, as will the commission on Sunday. Now, we got an open house on Sunday, one-thirty at Oakland, three-thirty at McCann.
Correct.
Make sure you get the school over.
The ribbon cutting is first and then they go in for.
Yeah. Anyway, uh, select a site for a new high school. Been talking about this for a long time, and we're going, we need to make a decision. And if we don't do it tonight, we need to make it soon. Uh, it's basically, uh, two and a half to three-year process to get a high school bill. Two years, a matter of fact, does everybody have this, Gary? Hang on, Shane. If everybody would look at this sheet here, where is it, in their packet? And I'll try to kind of simplify this. Seven-hundred-and-ninety days until that day. Uh, we need to start securing, officially secure a funding, uh, soon, soon after nine-twenty-four. I think the date's down there on nine-twenty-eight, we'll have to go to health ed. I think over the next forty-five days, we're all going to have to start working on educating the commission on the need for this school. We're going to talk to these commissioners, uh, we're going to have to sell them on whatever site we choose. Uh, this is going to be roughly a fifty-million-dollar expenditure. That's the reason I think we need to make a decision and get moving on it now. But we will take it, whichever school we select, uh, to the health and ed on Tuesday, September the twenty-eighth. Uh, budget on the October the seventh, and hopefully the full commission, if everything goes as planned, by ten-fourteen, two thousand ten. Uh, we consider going before that, but obviously there'll be a new commission and we ought to give them a crack at it. We'll go to the bond market, uh, and we got a hundred and eighty-two days from when we'll go, we're requesting funding. It'll be from ten-nineteen hopefully to six-twenty-nine, and, and obviously there's no guarantee we're going to get these, this school. The design takes roughly, what, five, six months, Gary? Uh, and what I want to make sure that we're doing, affect, as soon as we approve, approve a plan, our thinking is that we go back and rebuild Segal. It's been, uh, highly effective, it was cost, a cost-saving building that, as soon as we approve the, the concept that we're going forward with a high school, I want to start rallying some folks together to kind of look at Segal. What kind of changes can we make to make it better? Where were their snafus with, with Segal when it opened? And I want to start on that immediately. Gary, Mr. Clardy, when he put this together, uh, said that they'll need be, to be a hundred and forty-seven days for the design. And we'll start that on ten-nineteen, right after we get approval, and it'll be wrapped up by five-eleven. Now, th- these are all workdays too, these aren't weekends, so a hundred and forty-seven workdays. Uh, we think we can fund that internally, the design ought to be somewhere around one-point-three million dollars, shouldn't it? Mr. Sam Big, ain't that what we decided for Mr. Clardy? And then they should reimburse us when they go to, uh, market on that. Uh, but it reflects what we do as part of the design process, peer group discussion, working drawings, peer group review, review drawings, final peer review, bid documents, uh, design phase complete. What that's basically saying, they're designing and we're having a lot of dialogue along the way. We're reviewing what they do, if there needs to be changes, we make them during that process. Uh, we'll go out to bid hopefully by five-twelve-eleven. And, uh, for thirty-four days, at some point, we'll have a bid opening, obviously, and approve a bid. And then finally, we'll start the construction. And we allow five-hundred-and-forty-nine, uh, days, those again are Monday through Friday workdays. We start on six-twenty-nine, two thousand eleven. And the plan is to open it on August the fifth, two thousand thirteen. Takes about a little over two years to build a high school. And they are, what, three-hundred-and-thirty or forty thousand square feet, aren't they? You guys remember? Not to mention all the, uh, you know, stadiums, parking lots are probably double what we got with the middle school. So, I think, uh, and, and Shane has got, uh, Mr. Morgan's got, uh, some information with respect to anticipated enrollments, uh, and also some, uh, recommendations where we ought to go. Shane? Just Clardy, you need a?
I've, uh, supplied each one of you a binder that has the information you'll need to start looking through this process. Um, the first tab you'll see is simply called zoning. We, uh, so far, I've evaluated several plans, but these are the two I feel most comfortable in presenting at, at the moment. The first plan, um, would be, well, let me give you a few numbers just to give you an idea of what's going on. Last year, our enrollment numbers, uh, the statistics were, um, at Blackman, we had twenty-three-hundred, um, a little over. The Eagleville area, um, somewhere around two-hundred, and these are all for high school.
Hey, hey, um, Mr. Morgan, let me stop you there. We put together, Mr. May's generated a report at the end of the year for each one of those schools, and I've got those exact numbers, it might save you. Actually, I, I think you missed a mark on one, but, uh, I've got a copy for each board member, let me give it to them. Matter of fact, just so you don't have to go through the numbers.
Yes, sir.
Let me read them real quick. Effective then, the last school year, Blackman had, and you might have been reading something different. Blackman had two thousand ninety, Laverne, this came from Mr. May's in Horizon, Laverne had two thousand ten, Oakland sixteen forty-six, Riverdale twenty-one twenty-eight, Segal nineteen thirty-four, Smyrna nineteen forty-seven. Now also, you know, I don't want to steal your thunder, but I want you to work off the map and I want to give some other information, okay?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Morgan has, what he's done is taken the fifth through eighth grades from each, uh, zone. And he's promoted them so that effective two thousand thirteen, they will be nine through twelve grades. And that's good that he promoted them all, way to go. We don't, we don't want retentions. That said, uh, as you see on that sheet, and also we factored in three percent growth for each of those years. And you know, it's kind of, when you figure three percent growth, uh, per year, over three years, that's a lot of kids. Uh, for example, if we had thirteen thousand kids, three percent of that's what? Uh, four, four-hundred-some-odd kids each of the next four years grow. Also, he tried to track some employment, uh, patterns within those particular districts. But he's showing that without, with, even with a high school, and again, we, there'll be a few pulled out for the, uh, magnet school, and I don't, we'll say they're proportionately removed from each school. But in two thousand thirteen, uh, if our figures are right, and I've kind of told him, make sure they are right, sir. Don't want to mislead anybody. Blackman will probably have twenty-six thirty, Laverne could be at a little over twenty-nine hundred. Oakland, two thousand seventy-four, Riverdale twenty-four oh six, Segal, two thousand ninety-six, and Smyrna High, twenty-two hundred and seventy-seven. And again, that's taking fifth through eighth grade, promoting them on, factoring in three percent growth. Now, from there, uh, why don't we skip to the map and show what our recommended zoning is?
Absolutely. So, um, the map on the screen is a little harder to see, so I suggest looking down at your book. And the second page may tell the story a little bit easier about how we pulled the students from different areas to make up these groups, uh, of new zoning. Um, basically, we took Laverne and, and pulled the line all the way back to the interstate, and that leaves that at around nineteen oh seven. Uh, pulled an area that is currently at, um, Smyrna High School, uh, and pulled it into Stewart's Creek, and that's about four-hundred-and-thirteen. Pulled the lower half, which is right now the lower half of the Laverne High School, around seven-hundred students. And, um, from Black, the upper part of the Blackman High School, that's five-hundred-and-forty-two. Um, for Blackman, what we did was kind of shift the entire thing down. So what you're left with is, is basically what was cut off in the north, and that's fourteen forty-eight. And then we took in the Casey Lane area that isn't, that's currently going to Riverdale. So you get kind of that contiguous pattern all the way across that side of, um, of the highway there. And that's three-hundred-and-three more to go back to Blackman. Um, another change that we made was, uh, taking part of what's now Blackman in the north, but on the other side of the interstate, on the west side of the interstate, uh, three-hundred-and-forty-two, we bring it up to Smyrna. It kind of fills in that gap where we took the road from the interstate. And then finally, uh, down on the southern end of the county, um, there's a dual zone at the moment there. And, um, I simply divided it and said, one side is going to Eagleville and one side is going to Riverdale just to balance the numbers, so we knew exactly how many were going to go to each school, or had a pretty good idea. And it's a hundred and forty-three more to Eagleville and a hundred and eleven more to Riverdale. And that would be the plan for Stewart's Creek High School. Any questions? All right, next page.
Ms. Blair?
Mr. Gill, what would you project would be the perfect student population for the settings that we have at Riverdale in Oakland?
Uh, yeah, that's a good question, uh.
I mean, Riverdale has handled what, up to twenty-four-hundred?
Yeah, they've gotten up to twenty-four-hundred before, yeah. Uh, but I mean, it's difficult, obviously. See, the, and, I, I want to say two thousand, twenty-one-hundred max would be the best, but I'd say nineteen-hundred to two thousand would be more of an ideal population for them. Of course, uh, the, the issue with Smyrna and Laverne too is both those schools have been added on to three times. There's just simply no room to put anything else in either of those two places. There's not even where to put portables either, of course, you could say about Riverdale too, Riverdale's overflowing with portables. I mean, there's clearly a need for, uh, all three of those schools to get relief, get relief fast. But, uh, I don't know, I hope I answered your question, Mr. Blair.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, the, uh, the next plan. Plan two, uh, is, if you will, in favor of building Rock, Rock Vale. And the first page, of course, shows you just an overall view of that situation. And again, the second page gives you an idea of how that is broken down. Laverne, again, is, is shifted up, but not to the extreme that we just covered. Um, it just goes below the interstate and it leaves it at about twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-three. The remaining amount would go to Blackman. Um, Blackman is, is not split up from the north, it catches that tail end of, of what's now Laverne, and it adds three-hundred-and-eighty-five more. Um, on the other side, on the southern side, we take, um, uh, we shave off Blackman to create part of Rock Vale and, uh, at Franklin Road, and that's six-hundred and two. Also, to kind of move this balancing act around a little bit, um, we take in that entire dual zone, that's two-hundred-and-fifty-four students, that kind of creates the core area for, uh, Rock Vale. And, um, we also shave off, uh, part of the Riverdale side that creates six-hundred-and-fifty-four more students. Then to shift the students around a little bit, so we kind of balance everything out and get the numbers, we're trying to get them as even as possible down on that side. Uh, we take part of Oakland and move it into Riverdale, that creates three-hundred-and-eighty-four more. And then take part of the Segal area, which is that downtown area near the courthouse, and it's a hundred and seventy-six students. Bring it up to Oakland, and then finally shave off at two-thirty-one, uh, the Segal zone and pull it into Oakland, that's a hundred and eighty-five.
How many students are at Eagleville right now in high school?
Uh.
On that list?
I wouldn't say there's three-hundred, is that?
But if you, if, if you build Rock Vale, you're going to cut them back to a hundred and sixty-four. We've already talked about building a school out there, I don't know if we'd need to build a school out there then. Did that? But anyway, let's just.
Well, we've also talked about adding classrooms at Segal. High school, eight classrooms and I.
Believe it or not, with, yeah, that's a pretty interesting point. Segal, uh, with the promotion to their fifth through eighth graders, I guess, and I think it's because Oakland Middle and we rezoned that, uh, Breckenridge areas up, then we kind of gave Segal some relief, so even, that side of town is not in too bad a shape. It's the other direction where we're hurting. And I think, uh, like Mr. Jergens said, we can add twelve rooms on the Segal for, you know, relatively inexpensive and give them some relief. And there's still ample room to grow out of Oakland, so we're going to be okay there, I believe.
Doesn't that kind of devastate Eagleville if you go this way, if you build a Riverdale one, it kind of?
Well, if you build, you mean if you build Rock Vale?
I mean, if you built Rock Vale.
You know, I don't know what, what holds, you know, I don't know what holds, what's held in store for Eagleville then, I don't.
I just, that was just a question, it was food for thought.
See, there'll be a day that'll be zoned and, you know, I don't know who will be on the board, I don't know who will be the superintendent, but, you know, there may be, I don't know what the discussion will be with respect to Eagleville's future, but I sure as heck don't want to go on record saying I'm advocating pulling all the high schoolers out of Eagleville. Uh, you know, they love that school, they love that community, but, uh, I'm sure that, yeah.
I'm just saying that's one of the peers.
I think there'll be a discussion pertaining to that.
After, after a point, money starts driving a lot of things.
Everybody take one of these, this is rather primitive, something I just kind of sketched out today. Pass that down to Dr. Vernon. There you go. There's three for the Eagle. But, uh, as I said, it's, it's a bit primitive and it will affect the sketching, but, uh, what they're viewing is Laverne High School's anticipated enrollment, uh, twenty-nine thirty-six, twenty-two seventy-seven, twenty-six thirty at, uh, Blackman High, twenty-two seventy-seven at Smyrna High. And the reason I've felt all along that Stewart's Creek was the way to go is because it's, uh, and this is assorted the scale. I mean, it's the midpoint between those three schools, and, you know, we can pull, you know, five, six hundred out, whatever's needed as, as, uh, Mr. Morgan said, and move them short, a short distance into Stewart's Creek. And, you know, it looks like the solution for Riverdale is going to be move the other side of that Casey Lane into Blackman when we create room there. I think our problem with, with Rock Vale is going to be, if you turn to page two, and you guys can trash this, or, or it may make some sense to you. But you're going to have to take, if you've got twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred kids in Laverne, you got to get them somehow, some way to Blackman, and that's a long way, any, any way you figure it. And same holds true for Smyrna. And then once you do that, if you take a thousand out of those two schools or eleven hundred, you got to move, turn around and move a big part of the Blackman zone right back into Riverdale. And move a big part of that out, out of Rock Vale, and to me, it doesn't make as much sense as looking the other direction, but I don't get a vote of this. Is that useful to anybody?
Well, I. And I'm looking, trying to think about the road network from La Barre and Smyrna. There, there's no good roads that bring students out of the western edge of the county into, uh, Blackman High School. There, there's no good roads that bring students out of the western edge of the county into, uh, Blackman High School. You've got Amable Road, which is, uh, state plans to make some improvements on it, but that's a long way off. Then you've got all of the east-west roads through there that are very much rural, uh, environment. It'd be very difficult to move.
It, it's a good point. And on the back, I think, he also, and I think it'd be good if you guys took this and studied a little bit and kind of, and I know it's a lot to jump on you at one time, but I think that last, uh, section has information relevant to travel, the distance, et cetera.
It's got the distance.
Yeah.
There's, uh, several points, um, in that distance section that, you know, just says, this is the far reaches of, of the areas that we're talking about. And these are several different ways that we could, could go from that far end to one or the other school. So there are about a hundred pages there of just different directions, uh, that we could go with this. It would take some time to consume that.
Any more questions?
Let me ask one.
Go ahead, Mark.
I just want to go back to this sheet for a minute. This, Laverne would show nine hundred and twenty-six or so increase, but no other school even comes close to that. I guess other than Blackman. Riverdale only shows a two hundred and seventy-five. What's the, I mean, are, does that, is that telling us our middle school zones are off now? Or how, how do you explain that big difference? Because that's pretty important.
Well, I asked the same question too. I mean, it appears like, and we need to go back, I mean, all of Laverne Middle goes. All of, uh, most of Rock Springs goes. Uh, some of Stewart's Creek goes. Uh, we know all those elementary schools down there are busting out, which includes fifth and sixth, fifth grade. So, that's the one thing I asked, yes. I want to make sure that you've got those numbers right. Are you comfortable that they are?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Clark?
I think one evidence of the growth revenue there, we moved portables into that area this year. Even Laverne Lake down that side. And it's only, you know, a few years old. And the subdivisions, what is that called up there?
Of course, six.
Lake Forest. That thing is full of elementary students. Five, six, seven, uh, and they'll all be, I mean, all of the kids are zoned, uh, for Laverne High School.
If you go out Amable Road, all those new subdivisions out there too, all the way out. Almost into Amable, there's a lot of subdivisions.
That's why we're confident that the numbers are pretty close.
I, I want to do what Dr. Burns said though. I mean, and that, that's a good question and I've anticipated being asked. Well, listen, tomorrow we'll look at those zones and make sure that that's, because that is, it does stick out.
Well, it might just be it's a different population down there. That's such a big difference. It just makes you wonder if we need to be doing something else right now. I don't, I mean, I don't know.
Uh, yeah, good point.
Grant first, then this...
This, this may be a little bit off where you are right now, but, uh, I've got a question about the, the sites themselves. Uh, are both of those comparable from the standpoint of they're ready to go? We get the funding, uh, I mean, pad, uh, is there, is that on both of them?
The pad or...
The infrastructure, the, uh, everything ready to, to hook on?
You gonna build both of them or anything?
No, no, I'm trying to see. What I'm saying is, I didn't know about the length of time, because obviously some of these, uh, number of days you got here, it looks like they're overriding if we just picked a site out here that didn't have anything on it. These have already got, got a lot of these things ready to go, the, the pads there, right?
Uh, yes, they do, but, uh, it's, of course, no one's really been aware of it. But we've had a real struggle this year with Oakland and, um, Buchanan, Woodworth Buchanan. We're just barely tweaking by on getting those schools ready, because everything was just so tight. We didn't get the funding until late, and we had a bunch of weather delays. So, uh, we're confident that the two-year time period, also, we've got a stadium and all the parking and all that stuff to put in, which is going to increase the construction duration on the high school. And to answer your question, both of them are closed and ready to start on. Uh, you can't go start digging footings because we had to leave a certain amount of slope on those sites so that they would drain off and not ruin the pad that we had spent money to build.
But we're ahead on both of those sites as compared to the, the, the middle schools, because obviously that, that was where we left the, the last construction at those respective places.
We are, but when you throw the stadium in that we would have to build also alongside this, then that also increases the duration, you know, back. It's not like building middle schools now.
I see in some of that. But, uh, anyway, I just want to make sure that we, that's been factored in on these.
But it also, it'd be nice to get one done in July instead of on the first of August and not have to, you know, be, feel like you're swimming upstream all the time. Which is why, you know, we know we're gonna do this. I, you know, I think we need to, you know, decide and get moving on it. Uh, and I do, I think it'll be a little indifferent to other schools in that it's gonna take fifty million dollars. And I'm gonna tell you, we're gonna have to do our, we're gonna have to build some relationships down there. We're gonna be talking, we're gonna have to do some persuasion. I mean, we're not gonna walk in there on September the tenth and, you know, try to sell them all having an old ice cream with M and M's on it. We're gonna go in there and we better have our, some legwork done in advance of that. So, I think we need to get moving on it.
Mark?
The sheet, the Dr. Burns, I don't think we got that on, on our side.
Yes?
Yes, we don't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a copy of that.
Yeah, I've got some extra, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mark?
Do you get one too?
Passing this out.
Here's one. Give me that, give me that. You get one there?
Any other questions on that? Or you don't know enough to ask? You want to kind of look at it tonight? If no other questions, we'll move on to general discussion by the board. Doris, you have something?
Yeah, I do. I got my copy of the Marshall County Tribune today. You all know where my wife's from and I, she likes to stay in touch. And I'm looking at the headline, it says, "Panel Rejects School Budget." Okay, it went through their Health and Head, Health and Ed with a hundred percent voting in favor of it. Against the budget, and the Budget Committee votes a hundred percent against it. Which the fight against it was led by one of the Health and Ed Commissioners. So, I, I guess my, my point being is how thankful I am for the relationship that our board has with our county commissioners. It doesn't mean that they don't question us, but, but that relationship, in my opinion, is to be valued and is to be nurtured. It, it's not something that just happens. Uh, it takes, uh, it takes a lot of effort on the part of school board members and the director in, in working with the individuals, the men and women who make up our county commission. As I followed the situation over at Lewisburg, now that's a different situation. Their employment situation is not, not very good. They probably either the first or second highest unemployment rate in the state. So they've got issues there. But I see a constant battle between their school board and their county commissioners. They just seem to be totally at odds with each other. They have a new director. Their budget director resigned. She was being pressured, she, she was gonna lose one of her staff. She says, "We can't do this without this staff person." They said, "No, that position's gotta go." She says, "I quit." So now they've got a new budget director. When this committee met, one school board member was there. Their director was on vacation, their budget person was not there. The article says that the board member for an hour and a half tried to persuade the commission, that these, this budget committee, that this was all needed. They're asked to cut eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand off. They've already cut staff. Their, uh, alternative school has two teachers. They've got three high schools in the county. There, we're talking about adding at Chapel Hill, a, uh, an assistant principal and a counselor. Well, that's two positions that are gonna have to go. And, and I see that system there being crippled by the fact that they can't get funding. And, and I'm just reminded how critical it is that we have a rela, working relationship with our county commission, how important this is. I can remember when, Mark, when you and I went to see Ernest on trying to build the middle schools. We were trying to sell him and he was trying to sell us. But at least we had a reasonable conversation. And I know each of you all, as you've talked to county commissioners, have had great conversations with them and how supportive they've been of us. So, uh, I'm appreciative of it. It wasn't exactly that way eight years ago, but, uh, it took a lot of effort on the part of every one of us sitting here to develop that. They, they came to believe in us. And I'm hoping that it'll get better when I'm gone. So, I, I, guys, I, it's just, you know, I'm, I'm appreciative of what you've done and what our county commission has done for us and the children and the people of Rockland County over these eight years.
It's a good point, Doris. The county commission has been very good to us for the last six years in particular. And, uh, I'm sure that, uh, maybe there'll be some new faces up there, maybe there won't. But I hope that if there are, that there are people that are, that are willing to, to work with, with the school board.
I tell you what is, in connection with all that, it was kind of disheartening. I'm sure you guys get the same flyers in the mail that I get, but they come in and the new, new, the challengers to the current commissioners always talk about wasteful spending and how we're gonna put up freeze on tax increases. We're going to, we're gonna examine these budgets. Uh, and when I read it, it's, it's a little disturbing, because if they really knew how little we were able to spend on education because of all the construction, uh, uh, you know, economy like it is, they wouldn't be saying those kind of things. And I'm like you, Rick. Man, we've been really blessed with working with a pretty good commission. Most of them will squeeze a penny as much as they can, uh, and they have big jobs and they've done a good job. So I'm not endorsing anybody, but I, you know, I've been happy with a lot of them.
I don't think the public realizes that there's not really a lot of big spenders up there. They have, they have, you know, they work us down and make us get, but they realize that we have to do some of these things. And they've been a very good commission to work with. Uh, I hope that the commission and the board can have a relationship. Anyone else? Any comments?
One last comment. You've probably been getting some emails notifying you that we've suspended outdoor practices from such and such hours. That's pursuant to, uh, TWSAA guidelines on the heat index. And the heat index is influenced by humidity, heat, and what else, James?
Those two.
Those two. And so, you know, the last thing we want to do is interfere with the athletic programs. And I know parents are out there and I, I don't, I hope they're appreciative. Uh, but at the end of the day, I mean, we're, we want kids to be safe. And, uh, it's dangerous to be practicing the middle of the day. We've sent, I sent a correspondence today, basically encouraged them to practice early in the morning and late, uh, in the day for the remainder of the week, regardless of what the, uh, heat index was. We are following that and we're sending daily updates that, you know, it kind of scares me a little bit that they schedule a ten o'clock practice and we're gonna send out a correspondence at nine-thirty saying, "You can't practice from eleven to six because of the heat index." So if you get a call or two, uh, hope you will head for the bunkers, you'll hang in there with me. We're doing what's best for kids, right, James?
Yes.
Any other questions?